It closed on the 30th, not the 29th. So they were all...
Okay. I think we're home free anyway.
All the selectmen's meeting to order of May 1st. We need not hold last night.
We do for one item under RSA 91A:3 Roman numeral 2 lowercase e litigation.
And we also need one for A, hiring.
A? Okay. Minutes of April 17.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some changes. I'm looking on page 10 and I'm looking at the third paragraph from the bottom. I would like the first sentence of that paragraph to go on the paragraph above. And then subtract that whole paragraph and it should read a new paragraph. And this is what I read on this day, on that date. Based on my research of the town ordinance on the town website, the only existing beach ordinance is curfew 16-1 reads, "No parking or bathing from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m." But the Park and Rec Summer and Fall brochure 2019 lists all beaches open from dawn to dusk. I would suggest that there be consistency as to the time the beaches are open. And I will give this to you. And then I have on page, let's see, I think it's 14. On the top paragraph, the first paragraph, it says Sino Bacteria. And then I want added in Assessment Subcommittee. And then on page 15, the second paragraph, it, Mr. Bauer states, "In the second week of May, Leone and McDonnell," I think it should be Soon, not Sun. And those are the only ones I have.
Any other correction? Okay, so we want to make a motion to approve it with the...
They're moved.
Second.
Yells in favor?
Aye.
What do you oppose? You? Next, we have public hearings. First one, Heather Martin, Nate Warner, request to hold wedding ceremony in Cape Park on October 19th, 2019 from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Includes setup and breakdown time, estimated guests 120. Somebody here to speak to that? Come right up to the microphone here if you would. Hi. How are you?
Hey, this is cool.
Okay, this, I guess, is just a diagram we've... It's a little bit better to see than the dock one you had.
Yeah. They gave me two copies.
All right. I guess it's just seating and an hour and a sign. That was it, a couple of signs.
Yep.
Yep.
No tents or anything like that.
Nope.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
You know, it's a public park, so while you're getting, I assume the two of you are getting married at this time, while you're getting married, there may be people who want to photobomb you, take pictures of what you're doing, show their little children. So you're okay with that because it is, we're going to keep the place open.
Yep, that's understood.
Yeah, we understand, yeah.
That's pretty cool.
Okay.
I have one. It also wants you to know that the public restrooms down at the dock side will not be open, though.
Okay, great.
Just for your knowledge.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Move to approve this application.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yells in favor?
Aye.
You ready to post? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for this, this is pretty good.
Nate's Andy work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nate.
Congratulations.
Okay, the next public hearing is Kingswood Regional High School to hold class of 2019 prom promenade at Cape Park on May 11th, 2019 at 7:00 p.m.
Hi, I'm Karen Godfrey.
I'm Jimmy Wares.
We're the class advisors for class of 2019. We would just like to make a change. It should be from 5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00.
Instead of, not at 7:00.
This has been happening for a few years.
Oh, God, yes, it has. Three daughters worth.
Yeah. And it's basically use the gazebo when they announce all the different couples and stuff, if I'm correct.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I do. I'm assuming you're going to have the people there to pick up after it, that you've usually done a great job, but I just want to have you confirm that you do have that staff ready to go.
I do. Our class officers are gone.
Ah, great, thank you.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion that we grant a special event permit for the Kingswood High School to hold the class of 2019 prom promenade at Cape Park on May 11th, 2019, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, any discussion? Yells in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ready to post? Hope it's a good night.
So do we. Thank you.
Yeah. How about warmer, too?
Okay, the next is the manifest bulk vote, which includes the manifests of April 19th and April 26th, property exemptions, requests and files, refunds, intent to cut timber, property tax credits and exemptions, and a raffle permit or pre-permit stage company.
Go on, Dave, don't...
Okay.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
I move that we accept the bulk vote.
A second.
Yells in favor?
Aye.
Hey, I think the board appointments, I think we were on a table.
Uh, no, I found that...
Wait, did you find?
I found the issue. The announcement we have are for the positions that have not been filled after we fill the ones tonight. So I got clarification on that, Dave, so we're ready to go.
Okay.
Just a, can I ask a point of information? So the ZBA, they're elected positions, right?
Right.
What do we do? Are we saying we don't have people to fill?
No.
I thought there was...
There is a timeframe where people that are...
Yes.
As they come up, they will be elected position at that point. But people that are on the ZBA now that were appointed, until their date of expiration, they will be on the board.
Right.
That's me.
And then that year is when a person will be elected to fill that position.
The reason I bring it up is that when I read the notice, it says Board of Selectmen's looking for interested party to serve on the following boards, two board members for three years on ZBA, so...
That one is wrong. Amy sent you out another one. That's why I had all those same issues and I thought we needed to table them. And she sent out a new one after I asked some questions.
Same thing for trustee of trust funds, right?
Trustees of, trust funds will take place tonight and it'll be taken care of.
Okay.
I can pass you down, just so you know, mine, it's...
I look at it?
Yep.
Let the record show we're walking to each other.
See the new one, what happened? A lot of them came off. And then this is the notice that is going in the paper. Can I, Dave, can I get, can we get a clarification from that on the ZBA? Do we need to appoint one ZBA member?
I don't...
That's what it says in this real, real one, that's why I'm asking.
The board no longer has the ability to appoint a ZBA member. What you can do is recommend an alternate to the ZBA and thereby they can appoint an alternate, but you no longer have that ability because of the shift in the powers.
So we should get this, this off?
Yeah, you should, you should take that off.
Is that, does the ZBA, is that...
The ZBA, the ZBA can accept applicants or interested parties for alternates, but the board no longer has that authority.
Okay, so this is one member for one year, so this is wrong.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the motion would be to approve minus the ZBA.
I'm going to read the appointments.
Names.
Yeah. Okay, the agricultural commission member will be Blair Moody. Trustees of trust fund alternate Karen Haskell. Zoning board of adjustment, an alternate, they will decide that, I think, next Monday. Carroll County Transportation Advisory Council, that's me, Dave Senical. Wolf Pro Economic Development Committee, Steve Durgan. Wolf Pro Economic Development Committee, Mary DeVries. Energy Committee Member Susan Fuller. Energy Committee Member John Byers. Energy Commission Member Dick Boyd, Bert, excuse me. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Mary DeVries was for an alternate. That's what her letter said.
Alternate.
And I'll make a motion that we appoint those individuals to those boards with that one change.
I'll second it.
Yells in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ready to post? Town manager hiring process update.
Dave, if I could, we just need to make note to remind these people, and we'll do that in the letter, that they have to see the town clerk to be sworn in.
Sworn in.
It's been, it's been a trending problem that we've got to get corrected.
Hey, Linda, you want to bring us up to date on...
Sure. The board time to send in emails to be on the interview panel has closed. We received 23 people who would like to be on the panels. There were two department heads, three staff members, and 18 community members. One of the community member has withdrawn. The interview will take place on May 15th at All Saints Episcopal Church. We have three rooms there. The cost will be between $200 and $300. The secretary is on vacation and I don't have a contract, but when I talked to the pastor, that he thought it would be in that range. The interviews will take place from 9:00 to about 5:00 p.m. Will start at about 8:30 for a brief get-together. I have arranged for the board to eat with the senior meals that we will, they will, they're going to have, and we can have some other sandwiches. But they, on Wednesday, will have broccoli soup, sausage rolls, and dessert. They'll make some other rolls or sandwiches for us, and they will make some extra soup. Amy will get some potato chips for us. In the morning, she will arrange for us to have coffee, muffins, and juice. And in the afternoon, she will make sure that we have some dessert. The board will need to schedule a meeting sometime next week to decide on the semifinalists. Today was the last day for applicants, candidates, to send in their essay questions. And the other thing I want to announce is the board is rescheduling its May 15th meeting to May 22nd. We thought it would be a little bit long of, long day to start at 8:30 in the morning and then get done at 5:00 and then to a board of selectmen's meeting. And Dave and I talked about that. Is that okay with the rest of the board members? Anybody have a problem with that date?
It's okay.
Don't think so.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I might be able to tell them, but that's all right.
New business. Update on the library construction project.
Good evening, I'm Cindy Scott. I'm the director of the library, and I wanted to bring you up to date on what's been happening in the library. It's been about a year since we initially started on the construction project, and most of the project has been behind the scenes and out of sight. But now, anytime you drive by the library, you can't miss how, how the shape of the building is and what it's going to look like when it's done. They are working hard on getting the structure weatherized so they can do more work inside. The weather shield is going on this week. Next week, they're going to pour the concrete slab in the addition, and they're busy working on getting all the walls around the exterior completed. So we are working very hard to move things forward. On the inside, they have built a wall across the front of the library and down the side and middle of the library, so that the library is operating out of about two-thirds of the space that we had before. We are doing this by compressing collections so that every square inch is packed full and by actually packing up parts of the collection and storing them off-site while the project is ongoing. We have also reduced some of our services, primarily, we are known for the many programs that we do, and we are still doing the story times and the book discussions and some of the genealogy programs, but we're pretty much not doing any of the major programs that we've done in the past because we don't have a meeting space. We will be scheduling off-site, some sort of summer program for children, and the genealogy programs are also located off-site at this time. The HVAC system, it's a good thing we're doing this project. It's been slowly falling to pieces this, this winter, and we are now down to one boiler and one air handler. And of course, it turns out to be the air handler that's right in the way of all the work that they need to do to install the new HVAC ductwork and system. So we're waiting for temperatures to get to about 50 degrees at night, and then they will disconnect that and we won't have heat anymore. We already don't have air conditioning. So they are working on an alternative to get us air conditioning for the summer so that we will be reasonably comfortable in the building. The site has also had a lot of work that needs to be completed on it, which was suspended for the winter. Winter came early and it's been running a little bit late, which has delayed things a little bit, but we'll be looking at the new water line being installed sometime later this month, I believe. And the other conduit with the new services are also going to be going in this month. They're also going to be working on the parking area, which has been sort of a problem, getting in and out has been a little difficult with that dirt driveway. But the area where they've been working from is going to become the parking lot for us, and the driveway for us will be, the public and the staff will be changing to about where the old driveway was, it's going to be the new driveway, and they will be taking over the back parking lot to get all of the drainage and work that needs to be done back there completed. This is going to be happening sometime probably before the summer rush really gets going. There are some other things that are not going to happen, hopefully, until after the summer rush. They initially were saying that they would be ready to have us move to the new part in July, and now it can't be July, it's going to be June or August. So it's looking like August right now, we'll be moving our operations into the new part of the building once that's completed, and we will be turning over the old part of the building to them. They have gotten, the new restrooms are mostly built now, they're where the old reading area used to be, plumbing is in, and that will be ready for when we open because there is no water in any of the new part of the, of the library. So they had to take over more of the original building than we expected to make sure that we have the facilities we need. We are a little bit behind schedule, probably about four weeks behind schedule at this point in time. A lot of that's due to the weather, and they have, Milestone has indicated they expect to catch up on some of that as we are able to be inside and not have the impacts from the rain and the snow that we have, we've had this winter. So the schedule looks like we're going to be completing the project in November or December, which is not too far off where we were looking at, which was sometime in November initially. So we're pretty close to on schedule, and the budget also is on schedule. The, it's all being managed very well. We've had a few surprises with some unexpected issues with some of the materials on the site, you know, underneath the front yard and things like that, that were, cost a little bit more than anticipated, but there's still plenty of room in the contingency funds. So we're looking pretty good in those areas. Also, the, the funds coming in from the foundation, they're on a quarterly schedule as they receive their pledges and as their investments free up from the terms that they had for them, they'll continue to get quarterly amounts in. The trustees have sent the majority of the money that they had in their trust fund in as well, and they have just a little bit left because every so often they receive a donation, so they didn't want to close the account completely. But as we get further in the project, there'll be another smaller amount, considerably smaller than the $100,000 that has already been transferred over. Let's see, so we're hard at work right now on furniture and technology, trying to determine exactly what we need in the building and where we need it. We are having a lot of the existing oak furniture, which was very good quality furniture back in the 70s, refinished locally and reupholstered, and we're going to be reusing a lot of that. We're looking into what we can do with the stacks to reuse quite a few of the stacks as much as possible. We're going to reuse materials from, from the library, and we're, we're hard at work on that right now. It's taking quite a bit of hours every week. We, we spend a few days working our way through different areas of the library. The hours that we are open were temporarily changed so that we are closed Wednesday mornings and Fridays right now, so that the construction people have more time, that they can do the dirty, dusty, and smelly work that they quite often need to do. Sometimes we are able to stay in the building, sometimes we are not, but we arrange that. And that has really helped move things forward as well. The people who are concerned about dodging equipment from the construction workers should consider coming after 4:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, or on Saturdays, those actually are becoming more popular hours than they were before because people have figured that out, but we very seldom have any construction work going on at that point. But we are open our regular hours except for the Wednesday morning. We now open at noon, and we are closed Fridays. We have found that working with Milestone Engineering has been a very good experience. They're very cooperative, they're bending over backward to help us make as comfortable a situation as possible for our library users, and we are trying to facilitate what they need whenever they tell us they need to take over another area of the library, which I understand shortly they're going to need to take over one of the staff offices. We try to get everything moved using volunteers. We've had a very great group of volunteers come forward to help us save money by not having to hire anybody to do the moving and helping to get the collections rearranged or moved off-site if they need to be. So Milestone has been wonderful to work with. The minutes are online of all of the meetings, including the construction minutes, so if anybody wants to take a look at those, they can. And I had one question for you, which was, when I do these kinds of reports, which I want to do about every four to six weeks from now on, we had a little interruption, but hopefully we're back to normal. I just wanted to be sure I'm telling you the kinds of things you want. Do you want more details on the budget? Do you want more other kinds of details that, a PowerPoint presentation with visuals? You know, just tell me what you would like and I will try to bring more of that kind of information.
Well, I would think that some type of a PowerPoint at some time.
Okay.
Showing the public, you know, where you're at, what it looks like inside, because I'm sure there's a lot of people who aren't going there because of the construction.
Mm-hmm.
And I think explanations of what's being done, you know, like certainly I can envision a lot of the stuff that's going on and why it is, but a lot of people probably can't.
No, it's a, it's a, and of course, we've had the wall up for months now, and everybody wonders what's going on, but in the new wall they put on the front of the building, they've put a window in. Now, the window has a board in front of it right now because they're taking down the front wall of the library, but once that's done, they've promised me they'll take the board out so we'll be able to see what they're doing in the new part of, of the library. But I've also talked to Alyssa Paquette about coming through and, and doing a story about some of the things that are going on. We're going to be doing that later this month. And I've started doing my TV, local access TV episodes again, so we'll start to get some of that information out there. And we also are posting on Facebook and on our website and our blog with pictures, and we have never had as many likes and hits and reaches as we have with the pictures of the building project. You put something literary up, you get some notice, but boy, you put a picture of the building up and everybody's there looking at it, so...
I think it would be nice to also have something on our website, you know, in reference to that.
Okay, maybe a link to, because we've talked about doing a few more technology things, but you may not be aware that we lost our IT person, and she took another job, so we're looking for an IT person to replace her at this point. So we're, we're limping a little bit as we work our way through some of the technologies some of the rest of us weren't as familiar with. But we have talked about getting some other, some other things up on the website as soon as we're able to devote some time to it.
Yeah, because when you look at the side of the building now with all those windows, those, the permanent window sizes and placement and everything.
Yes, yeah.
So some people wouldn't understand why that's, you know, seems odd to have that many small windows, but...
Well, it was, it was part of our efforts also to be energy efficient.
Right.
And to create some display space inside, so yeah, there were reasons for a lot of the decisions that happened and it...
Well, some people wouldn't know that.
No, no, no. And certainly, I'm always available. If somebody has a question, they can email me or call me as well, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions at this point?
No, I thought it was great.
Thank you.
Kind of good.
Very awesome.
Thank you.
Hey.
By the way, I, I agree with the, the notion of anything you create, create it once and just let other people crosslink to it, just share it. You know, don't create it multiple times. Excuse me? Create it once, share it, that way you don't have to feed the monster. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is update on net metering.
Good evening, Barry Moochill, Director of Operations for the Electric Department. As you know, in the last six months, we've had quite a push to increase some of the capacity levels by which we allow interconnected with our grid as far as privately owned generation, specifically solar is a big thing. So we've been exploring options with that as far as increasing the level from 25 kW to 100 kW, and also as part of that, recognizing as we gain more solar interconnected customers, we really need to deal with coming up with a, a rate which would be fair to both the utility as well as the customer. And so with that, that initiated a talk about doing another analysis for our net metering policy. And then upon that, formally adopting that policy versus the pilot program that's probably been in effect for over 10 years now. So we have a lot of data. We just need to use that data to, to adjust our policy accordingly. Working with the Energy Committee and some other interested citizens, we had recognized that there was the, the availability of a Dartmouth student group in, in part of their research job that could perhaps help us come in and, and provide some assistance at no cost. So we, we went forward with that. We, we were interviewed by them, and ultimately, we just, we just received their report back. I don't know, it was probably within the last month. Although that report provides some nice baseline information, explores and defines some different methods that other utilities are using, it really didn't provide the level of detail that we need to come up with some actual financial numbers. And because of that... Uh, and because of that, uh, my intent is to go back with our original consultant, which was Mahu Seavy, uh, who does our rate analysis, and, um, and have him, uh, work on that policy, provide four different options, uh, and ultimately bring those options to you with some of the financial impacts of each option, uh, and let you look at that. We did have an existing, uh, contract with him, uh, scope of services. I can give you each a scope of service here that he would provide it back, uh, I think I cut the PO back in December. It still is open. Uh, my hopes is we can just carry, carry on. I've reached out to him until, you know, initiated, uh, initiated talks that we would, you know, start again and let's, let's go back at it, and so he's, he's on board with that. I'll hand you these out. A couple of you were, a couple of you were interested in exactly what that scope that he was going to provide.
I'll leave it.
I'll have a draft from him probably as soon as two weeks out. Thank you. Um, so we'll take that draft. I have some things to do on our end as far as the actual physical connection, um, of some of these systems, just to clean up our existing policy. And then our intent is that we would bring you, uh, a presentation. Mahu would be here. Mahu's done extensive work throughout New England with municipal electric departments, including, uh, Sterling, Massachusetts, which I know a lot of you have, or a few of you have actually gone to and have visited and, um, and, and, and looked at, at some of their interconnection. So he has a tremendous amount of experience in this field and, uh, it's not going to be like we're reinventing the wheel with him, so I'm looking forward to that. And then I'd hope to ultimately have a final policy in place sometime in June, so.
So he'll be back to visit with us in June sometime?
Um, we could probably get him, we can get him here to look at the financial portion sooner than that, but as far as some of the other things, um, the interconnection, um, we'll also, I know there's been a push or some questions regarding if we would allow third-party, uh, generators, I know, as part of that scope. Mahu's going to look into that, look at some of the legality of that, but then we also need to discuss that, um, internally, I think, if, if, uh, if that's going to be an option and how we would go about doing that. So I would hope to have a final by mid-June, but.
Okay.
I'd hope to have his presentation sometime.
Mid-June?
The final? I would say mid-June, Paul. I, I think that's, um, I think that's doable. Yep? So, any questions? If not, we will proceed in that direction.
No questions.
Anybody have any questions for Barry at this point? Linda?
Well, does.
You do? So we had a, uh, we had a meeting back in, uh, I don't know, it was November, Barry? October, November, December? I forgot the date, but it was with the library, and, uh, Mahu was going to, um, work with you or you with them to get something on a net metering policy by end of first quarter. Did the Dartmouth activity kind of get in the way of that?
So, and so with an attempt to try to save some money and not duplicate services, um, I felt as though, let's let the Dartmouth group do their thing in hopes that that, you know, we weren't paying for that, so versus, um, spending some money on this. And, and Mahu concurred. He said, you know, let, this is what they do. I mean, let them, let them go about it. And so that we did back off on, I backed off on having him proceed, and so we wouldn't be duplicating. Uh, come to find out, it really wasn't a duplication once we got it, so, uh, that led to the delay, yes. Yeah, ultimately.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Barry. A request to expand Abenaki Capital Reserve Fund.
Thank you. Hi, Christine Collins, Parks and Rec Director. Um, I'm asking to request funds from the Abenaki Reserve, um, to purchase a new rope for Abenaki. We actually were scheduled to replace this rope in 2020. Um, this season I had numerous, uh, patrons come up to me and give me some complaints about the rope we had. We actually went with a different rope the last time we, um, replaced it. It was a polypropylene. Um, the thoughts was it was going to last a little bit longer, be a little bit more durable for, um, everyone involved. However, we noticed that it was shedding. I guess it, when it was sitting, it was shedding, so it was becoming more and more slippery. Um, people usually have to wear either a glove protector or they put duct tape, but it just wasn't working. And if you're not familiar with the rope tow, it's even harder, and if you are familiar, it was even hard for them. So if you were a first-timer, it was very difficult. So we want to, um, go back to the original rope that we had, which is a poly deck. It still has that polypropylene that's in the middle, but it has, um, a covering on the outside of it to protect it a little bit more from the shedding, and, uh, we want to replace it a year earlier. Um, the current rope is too long to keep in storage as a backup, like it's 2,500 feet. So what we might do is, um, I was just talking to my people, we might have to take some of it, maybe we can keep it as backup to try to replace stuff if anything happens, because usually they have to make cuts in the rope and extend it, do whatever if, um, it starts shedding. So we might keep some of it if that would work. We're trying to work on if we could try to do something to the outer layer, but when I had talked to the patrons that were complaining, I guess the year before they had said stuff, but I had never heard anything, so I said I would check into it, and that's why we're here today.
Go ahead, Linda.
I have a question. As I remember, we were talking in the fall about you replacing the groomer, and then I see the groomer down here in 2023. My understanding is you were going to try to replace it this spring so it'd be ready for next fall. Has that changed?
It has, because if you recall, we had an emergency repair to the groomer, and now we had to expend monies for that, which would make it last three to five years. So we're still in the process of looking for a groomer, but we don't necessarily need one right now, so that's why it's a little bit down a ways.
You know, and I think that came up, I, I think you briefed the Budget Committee on that.
Yeah.
I don't think it came.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did hear about it.
Yeah, she told the Budget Committee about it.
I just, I just, when it came up, I just wanted to get clarity on that.
Yes.
You know, because we're looking at the amount and need to make sure.
Right.
That we can cover it all.
Right, so.
So I just, I didn't have this.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I moved to the lake, so I didn't have it. So that was my, why I asked the question, to ensure that we, because that's a major piece of equipment.
Yes, so we are in the process, even though it's three to five years out, we're still trying to get more accurate numbers, so we'll know if we have to add more money to that or see what we need to do.
Seems to me that the groomer was repaired for around 30 grand or something?
Uh, no, it was 11.
11?
11,000, yeah.
Right. Okay.
So in 2022, it's, uh, is, it's a rope tow motor, and is that a common rope? Is that being?
Yes, so we usually replace it every three years, um, if necessary. So sometimes we can extend the life of it, and we do so, but that's just ballpark, three years roughly, and then if we can extend it, I update it.
That's fine, I'm fine.
I move to approve, uh, Parks and Recreation, uh, accessing the Abenaki Capital Reserve Fund for the sum of $4,250, 2,500 feet of one-inch poly dac extra-lean rope.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hold in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Next is the bus ordinance. Zoom map's gonna...
He's gonna illuminate us.
I believe this should be titled the beach ordinance rather than the bus ordinance. We've, uh, reviewed the bus ordinance on several occasions, but I am going to request that we schedule a public hearing for that for the late May meeting, but my understanding is that that was in a further place along that we were comfortable scheduling that hearing. So just wanted to address a few amendments I'd made to the beach ordinance, and I think Linda may have some questions or comments on this as well. Uh, the general concern at the last meeting had been that I had included and incorporated a lot of the rules that are posted, three beaches in town, many of which are, some of which are specific to the beach, and many of which are actually sort of broad concepts or specific concepts that Parks and Rec Department enforces at the beach and may not be appropriate to include here, and further may make it so that the ordinance is not really as nimble as the Parks and Recreation Department would like it to be. So we've taken that language out and instead inserted the section 16-4, which is a general beach rules statement, essentially saying that all the rules and regulations for each of the beaches will be posted at the respective beach, that Parks and Recreation or the appropriate party would have the ability to enforce those or amend them as necessary and levy the scheduled penalties. Uh, aside from that, there have been no other amendments to this, this with the exception of a few minor changes to the parking section. There have been a few comments given at the last meeting, made some adjustments here, moving some of those items that were in the rules section, but that we wanted to implement on the parking side directly into there, and then also adding some different language on the high occupancy vehicle item. There have been some discussion about, uh, different entities may be treated differently, simply on the public versus private versus nonprofit side of things, so I've added some language here. Um, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, um, or hopefully collect some feedback and maybe make some amendments.
I, I have one, uh, concern on it. The one ordinance that we did have for beaches, um, closed the beaches at 10:00 PM and opened them again at 6:00 PM. I think it was trying to stop.
6:00 AM.
6:00 AM, to stop, um, swimmers and people using the beach over the night, and that has been lost in this. And yet, the Park and Rec, um, for sure, says dawn to dusk. I don't care whether it's dawn to dusk or whether we put hours, but I think we need to put, uh, a restriction on the use of the parking lot and on the use of the beach from either dawn to dusk or 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. I think we put it in here, it also would give the police, um, some clear timing to be able to go in there if we have a bunch of, um, young people partying in there that we can have, uh, something to get them out of there.
I, you know, I, I agree with that. Uh, I don't know what the right time is. Uh, you know, I, I see sometimes people want to do Tai Chi in the morning. I don't know what time they do that. Uh, I see sometimes people want to go and look at the sunset. I, I don't know what time they want to do that. So whatever the right hours of operation are, I think that's right. We should have some kind of a book, you know, a bookmarking of it so that the people know about it. I, I do have a question for you, Matt, so just a shorthand this for people who might be watching us on.
Sure.
On TV. All beaches, all rules are the same, is that correct?
That is incorrect. Uh, there are some rules, I'm going to have Christine back me up, on Brewster Beach that are a bit different when it comes to floatable things, and then I think there may be some other.
Yeah, so based on, oh, sorry. Okay, based on, um, the, like, Carrie Beach, for instance, very shallow, so there's a little bit more, um, you could use probably goggles if you're going in the water, maybe a little bit more flotation devices. Brewster's different, um, and same with Carrie. So, so it's a little bit different, um, Albee, I mean, sorry, uh, a little bit different at each one. That's why I said it would be best not to put the rules in the ordinance, because each beach has their own set. Um, kind of similar, but there are different things there. Um, I would be fine with 10 to 6. I think it was dawn till dusk and it just got carried over year after year. However, we did have some issues at Albee Beach in particular, and I think that's why we then had the police, they said, post a sign, and we did 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So it's, I mean.
You'd be here then.
Yeah, so we could do that. I mean, it is in the brochure wrong. I can definitely update the online version, so it's correct online in the brochure, and then I will for the future. I have a notes, I make notes for all my changes, um, and we'll just put a blurb on, um, once this is, we'll put it on our website as well, so people are aware.
So maybe I should, I should heighten the question. Uh, as it relates to parking, all rules, same for all beaches?
Parking, yes, I would say the same for all beaches, yeah.
Flotation devices, depth, people snorkeling, whatever, because of the, the pitch of the water, I got that part. But as it relates to what Matt is sharing with us tonight, this applies to all.
Yes.
Does, it, it's only for high occupancy vehicles at this particular point in time?
Well, I think there are also, there's also comment about, the first section under parking is about parking areas that are really designated for parking, and the intent there is for, we don't want to create an unsafe, unsafe situation if folks feel like they can park in an area that may not be appropriate if the beach is at sort of max capacity, so we really want folks to be parking in the appropriate areas rather than willy-nilly, frankly.
Parking on the road.
Exactly. And, and I think we were aware of some of the issues at Albee Beach related to this, and certainly there are other potential issues at the other beaches. So it's not just related to the occupancy and the, the maximum there, it's also related to just parking in really the appropriate areas for safety reasons.
And we used to lock all these, these parking lots, and I would say about 15, 10 years ago, Ethan came and asked us to remove those, so we no longer gate them, um, but there are gates at all of them that...
Well, you can't gate Carrie Beach, though. There's no gate.
Carrie wasn't, but, uh, Brewster and Albee were.
Correct.
There're gates there for do those, so.
Yeah, so.
And I don't think we've had big problems by opening that.
No, I think, I mean, the mindset was, these are beaches that it's nice, like, I live in a community where it is gated and you can't really use it when you want to, and, you know, our staff doesn't start till seven, so if someone wanted to get on the beach at six, I'm not going to call someone in to do that, or if they wanted to get in at five. So I think it works. I don't think we've had many issues. I think the police are patrolling it and we're pretty vigilant if we see anything, so I think we're good there, yeah.
No, I wasn't asking to change it, but I think that we have moved in, in what we've done with our beaches and parking.
Also, Carrie Beach is a staging area for modular houses and all sorts of construction equipment.
Right.
Sort of a town facility beyond the beach.
So, so what I would propose to do, based on Christine's recommendation and the board's view here, is to sort of add, I'll add additional provision and lay to the, the time restrictions.
10:00 PM, 6:00 AM.
Yeah, for parking and swimming.
And, and, and not to, not to have the chief come up, but Wolfport PD is, you know, is, will have briefed on the ordinance, and they're cool with the implications to them, okay? You'll do that before the public?
Yep, I did have a quick conversation with Captain Livy at the last meeting, actually, but before this moves forward, we'll have a conversation.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What I'd like to require, unless you feel like you don't need to do it, which you may not, uh, just to schedule this public hearing for your May, uh, 22nd meeting, uh, this would be both on the proposed beach ordinance and also on the bus ordinance, which you all have seen a couple times, if you're happy to do that.
Thank you.
You'll send us a draft?
Yep, I'll send you a draft. Minor changes, so I'd like to do that.
Okay, next on our agenda is capital project updates.
Hello, Dave Ford, Public Works. You should have the report in two pages. Page one starts with, uh, projects from 2010 to 2017, to your page. Uh, so the, uh, first project is the water line upgrades going back to 2020, uh, 2010, excuse me, and that, uh, was tied into the work we were doing on Senate Street. We did use a contractor and get that work done last year. Uh, there still is a little bit of an encumbrance there, uh, but that's, uh, to be drawn with the Senate Street project, and, uh, that, that basically work is all done. Uh, the only thing left there on Laney Street is to repair the road and the sidewalk, and that's not going to be done this year, uh, but that'll be incorporated into our road projects going forward. The design of Pine Street project is, is done, uh, and obviously the engineering, uh, for the water line went out. We put the water line last year and the road project, uh, was, put out to bid, and we'll talk about that when we get to, uh, Pine Street, uh, and, and road construction money. The big project is Senate Street, which again started in 2013 with an additional appropriation in 2017. Again, that project was done with Brooks, uh, majority was done last year. Uh, they restarted last week ago, Monday, and they've completed the box out, uh, so now they're working on the transitions and the side work. Uh, the hope is, within, uh, two weeks, uh, to be prepared to do their base paving, uh, which would mean the all the gravel surfaces and the areas they're prepping would be base paved right now. We have two layers of base paving in, and, uh, what needs to be done from about where the, uh, old bank used to be, uh, to the Pickering Corner, uh, that will be, uh, paved. And then DOT is going to incorporate the overlay piece of Senate Street in with the overlay piece going in the downtown area. Uh, that project was put out to bid, it was won by Pike Industries. Pike Industries has told us they're going to mobilize, uh, next Monday to start working on the, uh, sidewalk and, uh, ADA crossing issues, and if everything goes well, they could be in here, uh, the last week in May, in which we'll be doing a grinding out in the downtown area, which means they're going to take out an inch and a half of the pavement from Sewell Road to Pickering Corner, and then pave it back in at the same elevation. At the same time, or in the same timeframe, we'll have an inch and a half overlay of the... At the same time, or in the same timeframe, we'll have an inch and a half overlay that's going to be done on Center Street from Pickering Corner out to just for the bridges. So if everything goes well, you know, before June 1st, we could have all new paved roads and temporary striping it. So that's the goal and the schedule right now, which is always subject to change based on Mother Nature and based on the contractor's schedules. We're still, but we've had means, I met with the state earlier this week about the overlay work that seems to be progressing. There are some issues and challenges with the crossings. All the crosswalks are going to go back in, and they're going to put in the, what we see, this kind of a half dome bubbles at the tip-down locations, and those are supposed to be done within regards to the ADA requirements. We have physical constraints that make it almost impossible to meet those, so we are still struggling with trying to do the best fit for those situations. In addition, where Center Street comes into South Main Street, Pickering Corner, we have convinced them to grind out the whole intersection, so we'll have all new pavement going through up to about the entrance to the Three Sisters parking lot off of South Main Street.
What about lighting?
We're not planning to do anything to the lighting.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, but what I was going with is, we're trying to get the state to re-strike that intersection in accordance with their plans from 1974, which would, we think, provide better direction for travelers. So if you're coming north on South Main Street, you'd have a straight arrow, if you're going straight with a fog line, and then a right turn lane with a right turn arrow, clearly delineating if you're going straight, be here, if you're going right, go there, with the possibility of extending the lane out further, you know, back south. Coming from downtown, similar situation, straight through traffic would have a lane, there's an arrow going straight and an arrow going left. The intent, if everyone knows was coming up Center Street, which direction they're going, they know they're not having to guess. And in coming up Center Street, we'll have a left turn lane and a right turn lane. Part of the work that was doing on Center Street is going to create more of a stacking on the right turn lane, so we'll be able to get more people. A lot of time people get stuck because they can't get by and they climb up on the sidewalk. Once the new sidewalks get in, I would recommend they not try to do that, and that they hopefully are patient and get into the right lane going. So a lot of things have happened there, very exciting. There are some financials here that we have some issues to get over with the state, so these, I will be doing a more update with the town manager in a separate letter on that once I get that all straightened out. The 2013 sewer collection project has been completed. That work was finalized with some of the sewer work we had done on Center Street, and we'll be closing that project out. The solid waste building expansion, which was in 2016, we have a design. That project has been slowly put off because of other priorities, and due to the market with regards to recyclables, right now we're going through a trend where they're not being so valuable, so now it's, the way the scale of economy was before is not there now, so we're not going to push hard on this. We still have the design, we kind of put this on hold with other priorities coming up, so I will take this off the list, but we'll still keep it on the CIP list because it's really not an active project. The 2017 renovations of the old railroad freight building, obviously we appropriated money, $95,000, and John Sims was heading the organization to try to convert that building to a railroad museum, and he has had conversations with me. I think, has he come to the board yet to describe his dilemma or where they're at with that project? So I think we need to have a discussion about that project soon because it really will be something that we are going to need to deal with, and I think at this point, I'll leave it at that, that we should have maybe some further discussions on what's going to happen with that property, because it does not look like their fundraising is going as they hoped, and that the project costs have gone up extremely to do a complete restoration, so we might want to think about whatever offers we have with that property.
Let me ask you a question. Was that $95,000 a one-year warrant, or was it multi-year appropriation?
It was a one-year warrant, excuse me, it was a warrant that had a timetable on it, and then we had a second vote to extend the timetable.
So it's still open? I guess my question, is it still an open warrant?
2021, yes.
That's got to be. Because then I look at your, when I look at your report, that was the one I had, when I look at your report, you know, it doesn't show as lapsed, it just shows as sitting there, and my question was, is it a multi-year appropriation? And if the answer is yes, that's fine.
Yeah, but it was cash appropriated, so it's just sitting in the bank account, has not been...
Yeah, no, I got it.
And it's contingent upon other things, so...
I got it.
Okay, 2017, at the end of the year, we received an additional amount of money from New Hampshire DOT, $153,088. That was all committed to North Wolfboro Road, and the money is tied up in a contract with Frank Carroll. A lot of the work was done last fall, and we got hit with an early winter, the road froze up, so we could not pave it. Apologize to the residents of North Wolfboro because they had to put up with extremely terrible conditions there. We have now, when it froze out, we were able to grade it. So we're scheduling with Frank Carroll now to go ahead and base pave in the first 3,000 feet, because all the drainage has been done there, that was ready for paving, like I said. And then with money from, the balance of this money and money from this year, we will finish the rest of the 2,000 feet up to Diamond Corner, and with that drainage, so that project will be a two-stage. We'd like to get the base paved down and then do the base paving for the balance with the drainage, and then potentially an overlay for the whole project. Now, this is where it gets a little tricky. So we're going 17, so we got to go to 18, which is page two, and I did this to save, so hopefully that's too confusing for the state, is that okay? Go to 18? And hopefully the next time we do this, I can get this shrunk in the same scale. So 2018 warrants, we had the Westwood Drive, which is basically the petition to create a town road, and it was done, and that project was successful, came in under budget. Right now, we're working with Finance Department about getting a loan for that, and I know the residents there were kind of curious what their payments are going to be, so we are working on that. It does look like it's coming in a little bit under budget, and we'll hopefully get back to them as soon as possible once we get those details.
If that project is complete, we're not going to bond the $38,450 that you have balanced?
Correct. We were just going to...
Well, that you could really, should just go away, because we're only going to bond what it cost us.
Correct, yeah, so this, yeah, basically, there was only authorization we didn't need.
Yep.
And we did that to make sure we had enough money to get it done properly, and we did a lot of that work, so we did keep that cost down. The next one was the asset management grant for the stormwater system. It was a loan, and we did all the paperwork, and as soon as we got it all done, it was forgiven, and it ended up costing us $30 in interest for a day or two. That was phase one of stormwater. We are now trying to do phase two in-house. We hope to start that project in the summer, which we'll use our own staff to continue doing the inventory of the catch spaces that weren't done, and then to continue developing a financial plan in terms of replacement and upgrades of those systems. The 2018 town road money, which was $870,000, again, we did get the College Road, Kiwed in, and Tron Track, those were all the drainage and rebuilds. We added gravel, did a lot of drainage work, and they were base paved in. Those are on the list this year as soon as we can. We still have some shoulder work to do before we can do the overlays, but our hope is we can get to those overlays this summer. Those purchase orders have been, so this is not updated, I got to get the new, the bulk of the money now has been encumbered with Frank Carroll with regards to the overlay And again, some of that money is also going towards North Wolfboro Road. So our big projects now, the one thing here that I, we should do, because we're going to talk about roads, about the road surface management system after this, but when we presented this project at town meeting, I had hoped we could do more than we're doing now. The big piece of the road money that's going to be tied up is in Pine Street. That project was bid out. I had hoped to do that work for less than $200,000. The bid prices came in at $400,000 and $415,000. So the cost of contracting work out is significantly more than my estimate was. As a result, I still think that's a high priority, so we need to go forward and complete Pine Street and the sidewalk all the way up to Crescent Lake Avenue, and then we would be looking at, you know, at some point, connecting the sidewalk from there out to the sidewalk we have on Crescent Lake, out to the street, South Main Street.
Is the sidewalk going to be done in the road money?
This portion includes doing, redoing the sidewalk and the whole roadway, basically. So if that's, if that's something, you know, included the roadway as, you know, again, that's, you know, in downtown sections, the sidewalk and the curb is part of the drainage system. You got to have the curbs to keep, get the water into the drains. So if that is a problem, then we should discuss that. And I think one of the things I was going to recommend is that we potentially have a workshop with the selectmen and the Public Works Department just to discuss roads and road surface management system, what that report says, which we'll talk about in a little bit, and what we need to do. And I think it'd be, one of the things we haven't done is really sat down and have a work session, so I don't know if that's something the board would consider, and we can talk about these details, because that's a good point you just brought up, which is, this is the $800,000 road money, which says roadway, and whether or not if we can't do the sidewalk, then we got, we got some issues.
Because we used to do special warrant articles for sidewalk. That's why it came up to me, and if it wasn't listed, my question is, did we get authority to do that? And I think we need to sit down and take a look at that.
Well, definitely we'll do that before we do any, because we have the bids in, but I didn't want to sit down and have a discussion about that. The North Wolfboro Road is, I put it here, it was there, and I just, it's the same thing we talked about, that is going forward with the extra money from the block grant money and complemented with money this year. The dockside docks repair money, which was broken out, that money has all been spent now. The encumbrance is, the repair work has been done. There is money left in the engineering dollars with tie and bond, as is there's some money left on the dock expansion. We had done a study, so we have the money that's left there is with tie and bond. They're waiting on us. We're trying to get our committee back together, which we need to look at their recommendation plans for the repairs, and then they had recommendations for the extension of the docks and which would also necessitate moving the Mount Washington Dock and creating a new gang pylon. They have given us a very conservative design and a very costly design, and I think there was a need for the town, the selectmen and their committee to sit down with the engineer and ask some questions and figure out where we really want to go.
This is the dockside committee?
Yes. Now, the other thing that's news that just came early this week was that the state of New Hampshire has finally designated a department, Department of Environmental Services, because Fish and Game did not want to deal with the federal grant program. So there is a big, VIG, I don't know what it stands for, but it's something important. The big grant is now, the first year, they're going to open up for applications. There is, and they want bigger projects. This is a perfect project for that, we could be the first ones. It's $200,000 with a 25% match. We have money in the cap reserve fund, so I think it's important, if we could get together soon, make some decisions, at least on the repairs. If we want to put off the expansion, the repairs are so costly, it'd be nice to get a big chunk of grant money to help us to use the money that we have in the cap reserve and potentially have that as a capital project for next year. And as you do know, unfortunately, these structures are very conservative. They have told us that those docks are not meeting code, that we have to limit the amount of people on, no more than 15 people per 10 linear feet. We had a sign that was temporary, we're going to make more permanent signs for this summer, but it, and again, I'm not too concerned about it, but I have to post it because I think we have the liability. And I do think that we do need to be thinking about that. Those docks are, they're on a curve, they start to deteriorate. From day one, they start to go down, but the older they get, they go down faster and faster. So I'm noticing much more damage this spring than, say, last year, so I think we need to do this sooner than later, to think about the repairs, so I think we should get that dock committee going. Any questions on docks? Okay, dockside building renovation, we had the original appropriation, 150. We got a second appropriation, 150. We've had met with the Milestone Engineering Corp., who's the construction manager for the library. They are signed up and willing to do this project. We have not amended the contract to include the additional money. They're working on that now, working on schedule. We anticipate that starting late August, and then to really get into it September, October, have it all enclosed, and have those upgraded bathrooms ready for use next The next big one is the effluent disposal, RAB project, and we have a lot of good news there. Obviously, we did, last year, we purchased a five acres in Tofftboro that requires restoration. We have completed the installation of Pilot 5, and that has been up and running, and we have issued a major report on that, which a copy should have been in your packages. And I would say that hopefully it was, gives you an idea what's going on, there's some nice pictures in the background. It just is an indication that we have been very cautious moving step by step, and I think we've proven another way on how we're going to have this complete project. And the good news is, each of these pilots are permanent installations now because they have proved themselves to work out. We need to extend them. We have a big meeting scheduled for May 23rd at 10:00 AM, I believe it's a Thursday, with New Hampshire DES, and if the board of selectmen is available, I invite you to that meeting. The intent is that, to kind of show them what we're doing. The DES is kind of a partner with us on this project, and every step of the way, we want them involved, and I think this is the next big step to say, okay, we've built this, it's working, and you can see the good parts and the bad parts, because there's still some bad parts where the water's breaking out, but now you can visualize how it's going to work, and the intent is to stake out all the future work, which is shown here in the proposed trenches and proposed ENS systems. So that would be a good meeting if you're interested in attending.
23rd?
23rd at what time?
10:00 AM.
I'd like to go.
And again, I don't want to get into too many details in that, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if you had any questions on that report or where we're at with that project. The plan this year is, again, once we get the nod from DES, we will continue with the detailed designs and schedule and cost estimating and wetland permitting. That's the biggest thing. So right now, we want to make sure we have agreement, because we're going to be into a major wetland permit, because we are going to be disturbing wetlands, even though we're going to restore them all, it's going to qualify for a major permit, and we want to make sure, once we apply, we know how material we're going to disturb, and we want to have DES buy-in. So that's why this meeting on the 23rd is important, and that'll help dictate the rest of the work this year. All set there?
Can I make a couple of comments? Mr. Chairman, can I speak to this?
Go ahead.
So this, so Mr. Ford produced a two-page report, and when it came out, I just sent him a note, and I said, please don't respond to me, and I wanted to know how much time it took for him to do this, and from what I understand, it was a fairly sizable effort. Not that you had to generate original work, but you had to compile a lot of information that you already had in various and sundry files. And for the next town manager, I'd like to just make sure that we don't, we don't task our department heads with having to spend a whole bunch of time generating reports. We should find a way, have them be able to, I'm going to simplify it, push a button and have a report get generated. That's, that time spent feeding the, you know, feeding the report to the public is at the expense of that guy going out and making sure that road quality and all that kind of stuff is being taken care of. So we need to, we need to get at that and free up some of his time. Part one. Part two, I looked at the 20 to 2017 warrants that you categorized, and if I got my math right, which is probably not right, like, we spent 3.6 million bucks and we are less than eight tenths of one percent lapsed. We had to give back like eight tenths of one percent. I assume that all the projects that you've done were appropriately bid, I assume they were all done well. So of all the money we spent, it's a rounding error of how much money got lapsed. You encumbered all the money, so I give you a big double thumbs up for that, because I think that's, that just says that you're paying attention, and anybody who doesn't, come speak to me, please. The next one is on the 2018 warrants. You're about 7% underspent, but you've got rationale as to what's going on, and we probably do, Linda, to your point, we're going to figure out about, you know, when we get in the streets and how we go do that, because I think there's some controversy around that. And I assume that all of these things were appropriately bid, and so I come away from this, and I say to myself, and I'm not trying to be overly generous here, Mr. Ford, but you pay attention to this stuff, and I said to him the other day, sometimes I think he overreports. We got to get to the point where you just simply report. And then the next one, if I could, is, thank you for being active and on grants. We need all of our, all of our leadership to be really worried about that because we have big issues, and the fact that you're, you know, you're spending time looking for ways to get grant money to run your department, I think is, is pretty notable, and I would encourage us all to pay attention to that stuff, especially in other areas we're focused on. So with that, thank you for what you did. I think it's a good... that, thank you for what you did. I think it's a good piece of work.
Right. Unfortunately, I'm only halfway through the report, so.
Yeah, I'm going to go. I really enjoy these. When I first came in the board, on the Board of Selectmen, this was not being done, reporting out to the public. And when you've come in, you've spent the time for us to see where we are in these warrant articles. And I, and I think that's great. If you can put it on a spreadsheet and it happens quicker, that's fine. But I think this is what we need to do to the taxpayers. I know people will ask me questions, and I'll be able to then go back there and say, oh, he told me it was going to happen. And I think that's very important.
I think it's awesome.
And I really appreciate.
I just think, Linda, my point is, I think it takes, we, we got to, we got to task our information systems to make his job easier.
That, that's an information, that's a system thing you're trying to do. I think the material.
Right. That's, we all work together on that stuff.
Yeah, this material that's coming out, I think is extremely important.
I think the other thing that is critical to understand in this, and Dave may be able to back me up on this, I hope, if he, if I remember correctly, he used to give these quarterly, which would definitely shrink down the size of the report, and it would condense the time. You haven't given one in almost a year, correct?
Correct. It was, it's been, it's been a year. So I think we should get back on a quarterly basis. So I think we should commit to being back here, maybe June, July, and then do it on a quarterly basis so that we can keep, I'm not sure it's going to limit, but it, at least we can keep up to speed with what's happening. We try to keep you informed of anything that's critical ahead of time or in between, but it's been a rough year. So, okay, so you want, can I go back to the report?
Sure.
The 2018 warrant article 19 was the sewer infiltration reduction engineering, and we did do $20,000 worth of work. It, some of this hasn't been, so some of these financials, part of the report is the financials, in which we have the purchase orders and making sure that the numbers match with finance department, the other part, the comments are what's actually happening. Sometimes I don't have all the financials. This is one of the ones. So we did some additional work last year, and now we're preparing a set of repair strategies for a I N I project to be potentially as early as next year or the year after. We don't have the critical quantity we had 10 years ago, the peaks even with this all this rain.
That I was going to answer.
We only peaked at an instantaneous flow of 600,000.
Oh, okay.
And the weekly average was just above 500,000. 11 years ago, 12 years ago, we had weekly averages over a million gallons.
Yeah.
And monthly averages at 600, 700,000.
Yeah. Okay, good.
So we are still, but we can't give up on it, because it's one of those things. You plug one hole, and then it goes somewhere else. So we are continuing looking at this. Some of the strategy gets here, like you talked about, the grant money. If the state has a grant money or loan forgiveness money, then we make a bigger project that makes it worthwhile to go after, to go through the red tape so we can get the money. So what we're looking at now is a bigger project, and we also like to coordinate it with other road projects. So that is a planning project that's still ongoing now. So Underwood Engineers is doing that. And again, by the time we get to C I P, I should have some better ideas of what that project's going to be and when we recommend to go. The water treatment plant upgrades. This was authorized at 175,000 that were going to be taken from our cash reserves in the Water Department. It was to cover control panels and skater upgrades as well as electrical issues. We had some issues regarding the low bid and due to confusion, whatever, that, that piece of the work did not get done, and we decided that we could hold off on it. We focused the effort on the control panels. All that work has been done, and right now, I think we're showing that we have paid the $90,000. That work is done. And the 84,000 is not going to be spent, because it was not, it was, it lapsed. So we need to come back to the Board and the Budget Committee and Town to reappropriate that money, and we will be looking at that in the C I P process and the, for capital projects next year. The Pine Street Crescent Lake Ave, that was a waterline project, so that project was done last year. And again, it was intended to do it, originally, I had proposed this to be another, a bond project. So this project started, we can go back to the first page, let's see, Pine Street was 2011. What is it now? 2019. So we're eight years later. So as a result of other needs and the bonding being, we decided to try to incorporate that doing it two ways. Have the water fund pay for the water piece of it, and then have the town pay for the, within our road budget to pay for the Pine Street. And again, I added the curb and sidewalks. We're going to have to look at that. That could be a problem for us. That just goes to show you how long it takes to do a project. And it's something that, it's a.
Didn't that get tied up with the Center Street taking so long to get straightened out, and we didn't want to do that? You know, if everything had fallen in place at the timeframe we initially thought, that would, it wouldn't have been that long of a timeframe. But that kept on being.
It actually started before Center Street, and then we jumped Center Street, and then Center Street got bumped because of Middleton Road, and then Pine Street kept getting worse and worse and worse. The waterline had to get replaced, so the waterline work was done. Now we have money for the road, and we've got to now have a decision whether or not we want to spend the money on the, in the curb and sidewalk, because it's a mess right now. So we have to do something. And if we just do the road work, that'd be, you know, that's something we'll, we'll discuss again, in a separate meeting. The Bay Street sidewalks, that was appropriation for engineering. We incorporated the money, so it is, so encumbered the money with Underwood Engineers. A meeting with the engineer, I think, next Tuesday to go over the details. I would like to present to the Board our concept, how we're going to go about that. We think it's really.
And that's what you basically, just to reiterate, that's what you basically got an appropriation to do, was to figure out what we need to do to put sidewalks out there. Period.
Yes.
Just so that people don't misunderstand.
Right.
That was the limit of what the scope of the project was. Period.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Now, the challenges we have out there, so the approach we'd like to take is to contact sensitive solutions. We'd like to have a meeting and invite all the people who live or have properties on the project and any other stakeholders that might be interested, and say, what are the problems we have on that, that street? Well, we know that there's a speed issue and pedestrian conflicts with vehicles. And that's the need, and we know that there's a deep need to have a nice loop. That's what this is all about. And we have the boat museum is going, going up there. We have a business district that is slowly developing, and we're liking to extend our town. So we think it's really important that the town can't tell the people what they want. We need them to tell us what their problems are. And then we're going to come up with two or three different alternatives. How do we do that? Because we have some very complicated issues. We have a narrow right-of-way, only 40 feet. We have utility poles on both sides of the street, and we have a topography that drops off certain areas, and we have ledges in other areas, and we have houses that almost they can reach up to.
Zero clearance to the road.
So we have a lot of challenging issues. So I think it's going to be very important to first, not only to take, well, I understand this problem. We need to hear the people there. We need to hear the walkers who have problems walking their dog on the street. We have the housing complex up there, the.
The Taylor Homes.
Taylor Homes. So we have a lot, and we want to get their input. And then after we get their input and understand the problems, then we can come back with alternative solutions. And then the hope would be that then we could cross out those and then figure out how much we're willing to spend, whether we want to do curb and sidewalk the hallway, or whether we want to do something innovative. And also, again, try to address the needs with the project. This could be a very expensive project, and I think it's something that, again, this money would give us a lot of the answers, so that when we come to the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, we'll have, hopefully, those answers.
So is it your hope, aspiration to have something like that buttoned up for budget season next year?
Yes, this year. So we, this year.
Meaning next year's appropriation.
We're going to set some dates.
Yep.
And then the process will go by, and hopefully we'll have it wrapped up by August, end of August.
Okay.
The dockside cap reserve, we, that was the money that's in there now. So again, the idea of looking at the repair strategy, so we need to get that dockside committee back together and see whether or not we want to kick into gear a design for repairs that we can apply for that grant, for the big grant with the state. The parking lot cap reserve, that project is on hold. However, we are going to be working in the parking lot on the dockside building end, because we do want to put underground power, so we can eliminate those overhead wires. And we had a long-term plan, working with Barry, and to eliminate a lot of the wires back there, because this would be phase one.
There is a gun.
And then also the question of whether or not we want to do anything to better that area, because we've got to, we're going to put a new sewer service and a water service dedicated to the new bathrooms. So we're going to be digging up that portion, and we're going to be bringing in underground electric. So as we dig up that little area, and we're talking about the area between the ice cream stand and the back of Greg Rock's buildings, and whether or not we would want to look at maybe eliminating three parking spaces in return for another nice pedestrian area with a, with a potential landscaping. Mr. Rock has volunteered, he would donate landscaping if we would do some of the other root works, which would maybe some more tables, and to enjoy that nice view of the Smith River coming out. So it kind of makes some sense, but I think we need to then potentially have another work session with the Selectmen to see what your thoughts are, and whether or not we want to do that, or whether we want to hold off that whole parking lot project, which we're talking about. Just one piece of the parking lot, which is sometimes not a bad thing. So something to think about and something that we'll come back to.
One piece.
The last one on 2018 was the cap reserve, and that money was in. All that work has been done, and we did receive an E C M grant for that, $22,000 for the energy conservation measures that were taken. And that should help result in a lower electric bill this year. And we're continuing on that. This year, we're getting another appropriation of 125, and we will be looking at completing other projects that are on our long-term plan.
Could you speak to this energy rebate you got, Dave?
Sure. So we, as we're always looking for, the state had come up with free energy analysis of your facility. So we applied, got that grant. They had this engineer, Bolz, who was especially on, on treatment plants, looked at what we're doing, whether we could save, how we could save money inside of energy. One of the bigger was the diffusers in our aeration basins, which happened to be at the end of their useful life. So we had to replace them anyways, but it happened that we, we get this grant, and that was one of them. This year, we're going at, we have the effluent pumps, which after we treat the water, it pumps the water, the wastewater, treated wastewater up to the pond. Those pumps go on and off all day long. They're getting at the end of their useful life. So we're looking at repairing, replacing them with high-energy motors and pumps and see if we can get a grant for that. So that might be a smaller one. It might be $30,000 or $40,000, which we could get, potentially, you know, 50% of that for grants. So we are, again, looking at that. We also did it for the water plant, and the water plant was going to be coming forward this year with potential projects to, where we could apply for those grants. Those grants come from the public service, what's the name of that company? Public Service?
EverSource?
EverSource, now, EverSource. So they.
So the Electric Company, just make, I'm going to follow the bouncing ball here. The Electric Company, the backbone Electric Company in the state of New Hampshire has these grants, and these grants are available for water, sewer, buildings.
Well, the program we had was with D E S, New Hampshire D E S. They teamed with them saying, okay, if you go ahead and do this audit, energy, and they give you recommendations, and you can make them, then we would go to the, the power company, and they would say, okay, that qualifies. And we were able to get this money, we might be able to get more money. But there was specific, the program we're working with was for water and wastewater plants. I'm sure they have programs for other, for businesses.
For others, yeah.
And usually in the past, because we were our own electric department, we couldn't qualify, but I think they changed the rules to say, hey, you know, it's all about saving energy. So I think that, that is your question?
Yep.
Okay, so I am back to 2019. And let's talk about our big project. This is going to be a huge one, the Pleasant Valley Road Bridge. It was bid, and we had a successful little bid. It was R and Piper. This week, we received authorization from the state of New Hampshire that we can go ahead. And today, we just signed the notice of award that's sent out to R and Piper. They're out of Plymouth, Mass, Plymouth, New Hampshire. And now they can get their bonds and other things, and then they'll develop their schedule. Right now, we don't think they're going to start any of that work until late fall, and it'll be more of a winter project. I'll have more for you on that as time goes on. The town upgrades this year, we had 800,000. Like I say, the P O, big P O that we have is for Frank Carroll and for finishing up projects we did last year, the overlays. The big question that we do have to talk about is whether or not Pine Street can be done, or whether we'll have to put off the, the curb and sidewalk, because we have to look at that authorization. That's a good point you brought up. But we do have to say that the projects.
Why would we put it off, Dave?
Well, Linda brought a good point, which I, I assume the roadway includes the curb and sidewalk. In past warrants, we, specifically it was on state roads, so we didn't, we didn't have responsibility for the roads, so we had a separate warrant article just to do the sidewalk.
Right.
Another project, I have to go back and remember, when we had town road money, I considered anything you're doing within the roadway, whether it's drainage, and in this situation, would be curb. The curb is necessary for the drainage, and then the sidewalk. So we got to figure out whether or not.
If we're going to put sidewalks in there, we need to put that in the language of the warrant article. We talk about roadways and drainage. We did not put any word about sidewalks. That's my.
An RSA that says we have to do that?
You have to, you have to tell what you're appropriating money for. And it's labeled a road.
It all depends on your perspective.
It's interpretation. We should sit down and talk about it. To me, you know, it didn't include the sidewalks, because we had funded sidewalks separately. So that was, that's my.
Is an RSA that says we have to do that?
Do appropriate?
No. Is an RSA that says we have to do, we have to put everything, curb stones?
No, I don't think so. We need to find that out. I don't, I don't see it that way. It's.
I don't either.
It's a different interpretation or look, and we, that's a discussion.
Again, I, my, I thought I had presented Pine Street with, with the idea that it was curb and sidewalk, but we can go back in the presentations. The wording in the warrant article is very simple. I think it just says roadway improvements, and, but I've always taken that to include anything within the roadway.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not having a debate with my colleague here. I, I just want to make sure that we do the right things at town. If we need to repair roads and sidewalks are incidental to the repair, we should have that conversation sooner rather than later. Because if we delay, which delay, delay, which is not something I think we should do, that's not appropriate. But we should have the conversation, button it up, and move forward.
Well, it seems like we're going to have a work session here soon anyway.
I think so, too. I think we'll have a list of those.
We can take care of it then, David.
I think it's important that we do discuss it, because it is, because it does lead to the end of this, which is saying that I had also said we're going to do Allen Road and Lainer, in, in engineering Bryant Road. And that's not going to happen this year because of this. And if, but if we put this off because of the sidewalk, then maybe we could do those. So we're going to need to have that work session sooner than later.
We can probably do that.
Yep. I think it's important. And then also, because we're also going to talk about, you know, after we get this, we're going to talk about the R S M S, which is really something that's pretty big. So let me continue on the list. The dockside restrooms, we talked about that. So we will be using the rest of this money to, with Milestone, and then to put the water sewer in. Effluent disposal study, we appropriate additional money. Right now, Underwood is working on that final scope of work. It's got to get approved by D E S, and a lot depends on this meeting on the 23rd. Vehicle, highway vehicles, we issued, we've already come to you to issue the P O for the front-end loader, and the Chevy half-ton pickup, I think, will be here shortly, because we got that out to bid, and we're lucky there was one on the lot, so we're good there. The cap reserve funds will be transferred into our cap reserve fund, and once we get ready for the next issue of the P O, we'll come forward and explain to you where we are with that. The Carey Beach Water Quality Study, warrant article number 22 for 50,000. We issued the P O to Underwood Engineers. The site survey, it should be going on. Hopefully, it's not this week, next week. They'll be out there with surveys. If people see them, we'll be surveying the beach and all the property, the town property and the right-of-way. Our hope is that we will have a look at all the different problems and alternative solutions, and that I think this is another one that's going to warrant some close look with the Board even before we get to C I P, because this could be a major C I P for us. And also it might be an opportunity for us to look at grant money and looking at the project that's been done with the Watership Management Plan, and that's going to, this is going to be one of the hotspots that's going to need to be recommended to be fixed. So this might qualify us for 319 grant money if there's some of that available next year.
Does that, does that project, I didn't, I don't remember, does that project also address the septic system?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the prospective community septic system that could?
Correct. So we have three alternatives. One is to say, hey, the septic's fine, we're not going to do anything with it. One is to repair it and then potentially add some of the other homes that may be a problem. And the third option, obviously, is putting a pump station in and pumping up Forest Road into our, our system.
Sanitary sewer.
Which would be all the way up to Main Street. That's a big, so that also could have a major impact on cost in where we go with that. So there's a lot to go into this study, and lots, and we do have the, the Sinovirus Bacteria Committee, which is going to also kind of be in this loop, so they know what's going on and.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry to belabor it. I, and I'm, yes, it has a cost, but the, the corresponding side of it, what's the benefit of doing this? And so will there be some effort, I'm sure you will, to, to point to things that get better if we, if we make these remediations, right? Outcomes change. Less bacteria, less runoff, less better. So it'll be kind of like the two parts of the equation, right?
Yeah. Obviously, we had good support for this project. I think the next project's going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's going to have to be rationale why we want to do that. So that's a very good point. We need to sell it. And the, and the quality, we've got to understand, our golden. We need to sell it and the, and the quality, we've got to understand, our golden goose is that lake.
It's the beach.
And we have been abusing it for 200 years. We have slowly now, since the Clean Water Act in the 70s, we started respecting this water more, but we still have a ways to go. We found out what happened last year. We all were surprised when our beautiful Cary Beach had Sinobacteria and there's little white bubbles floating around and something that doesn't leave my mind. I think we all are committed to doing something and I think this is the important project going forward. The next project I'll just skip, which is Water Quality Improvements, which is warrant article 26. That $50,000 was specifically dedicated, $15,000 is the town Wolfborough's portion to go with Tufton Borough on the Watershed Management Plan and we're working with the Winnipeg Association on that. So that's an ongoing. And then the $35,000 we had was for doing some education.
$15 for the wet worth.
And then we had $15,000 going to Wetworth. So, so that's, those, those projects are ongoing to building maintenance, was a cap reserve fund and at this point, I don't think we've done any requests yet, but there could be something coming on that later on. So, now I'm done. So now, now we're, we're done with capital, and any other projects about capital projects or anything we've talked about real fast here?
We'll take care of that in the work session.
Well, that's, if we're okay with the capital projects, then I do. I don't, again, the intent tonight was not to go into details, but we have a very nice document here, Wolfborough Roadway Evaluation. In the past terms, we use the term RSMS and that stands for Road Surface Management System. I see now we have it as Road Service, that was Road Surface. This says Road Service Management Plan, so we kind of get different, but it's really about the town, town roadways. We, we hired Underwood Engineers and it was a two-year project. We used money from '17 and '18 to do the evaluations. It's a very detailed report. We hope to make this available to the public and want to make sure the Selectmen had it for us. And we feel there's a lot of data here and there's assumptions in a recommended 10-year plan. That plan obviously is based on a higher spending than we have. We're talking about 1.4 million a year and, but I think it's something that, it should be no surprise, because every year I say, hey, we should be spending more than a million and we're spending something less than a million. And we try to make that money go further by having the town crews do a lot of the work. But we're finding, especially in the last couple of years, we're doing the building project with Hoxton Record Forest Field and trying to do a lot of major road construction. We're falling behind in some maintenance issues and then we've had some manpower issues also. So, so this year we're backing off. We don't really have any major projects except for North Wolfborough Road. But this, we need to have a really hard look at this document and going forward, I've always been reluctant to go beyond one year. As we've seen this year, I had a plan and the plan has already fallen apart and we were only here on May 1st. So we do need to look at that and, you know, the thing about this is really a scientific look, a snapshot in time of where we are with our, our road conditions. And there's a lot of detail about beyond each individual road and there's pictures showing the cracks and, but it also tells us where we are right now. So in three years from now, hopefully we're improving that and that's, I think, if you go back 2010 and then 2013 now, 2019, we have these reports and we have spent quite a bit of money. And if you live on one of the roads we rebuilt, you'd be very happy. But if you're on one of the roads that hasn't been rebuilt, you're not so happy. And then if you, like someone told me, hey, my road's on the list, but it's not until 2026 and it's falling apart today. That's a problem. So we're going to have to make some tough decisions in which roads we do repair and then we might need to increase. One of the things they said here in your, we've always included overlays in the capital money. They're suggesting overlay should be in your operations budget. So we don't have a lot of money in operation, because that's something you have to do on every seven or 10 years. So that's another discussion whether or not we want to-
They call, they call overlays more of a maintenance function than a capital function. It's kind of like you gotta, you gotta, you know, when does a pothole become an overlay?
Right.
And, and you know, you rationally would say, I guess that makes sense. The problem is you're, you're, you're under operating expense to do that.
Right. And what's happened is we have so many bad roads, I feel like, for instance, one of the recommendations is overlay Sewer Road. Well, Sewer Road, except for one spot, is not in too bad a condition. But if we want to preserve Sewer Road, we should do that soon. If not, five years from now, there'll be a rebuild. But the problem is-
See, this brings up the, you know, the question we just had a few minutes ago. This, this is the, this is the give and take, is you have incidental operating expense on an already existing capital asset, you make that another capital program, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think-
An RSA out there, I guess we could follow it. If not, then it's opinion.
I, I think this is, I, I think it's very interesting to do the overlay in the operating budget and do it more often so we won't get as many potholes. We spend the time after we do the roads, doing the overlay, because that saves, am I correct?
Well, when you use the term potholes, if you have potholes, the road may be gone. So we can't do an overlay for a pothole. So that's just a, that's a technical issue.
What I'm saying is if you do timely layovers, you should not be getting the breaking up of the roads.
That is the theory.
And that, and therefore not get the potholes.
When does a road full of potholes become an overlay? That was my point, is, you know, you could say, it's only a pothole. Well, a road full of potholes, well, we got to rebuild the road, you got to overlay the road. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a conversation that crosses whether you do the capital side or the expense side. The way we've done it, I guess, is we've always done capital appropriations, right, or appropriations on the work.
Warrant articles, we've done them again.
Since I've been here, 2007 on, and before that we had some issues because money, we had a frozen budget and we couldn't do stuff that was-
Well, and now also originally, all the roads were in the operating budget. It was $400,000 and this was before I came on and what happens when your budget's short, there's $400,000. And so that was something that was apt to get skimmed off. So when I came on the board shortly afterwards, we took the roads out of the operating budget and put it in its separate, to make the commitment that we do the roads and there wasn't anything that was going to be-
And that's the danger, because in fact, over the last two years, money I had for preventive maintenance, crack sealing, is the first to go. Because that's not a crisis, that's good preventive maintenance. But when I have overruns in my salt budget, overtime budget, the first place I go is, oh, no crack sealing this year. As a result, that road doesn't get cracked seal when it should, three years go by, oh, it's too cracked now, you know, so it, it's a, but we're in that, this year the same thing. I have to deal with the crisis of the nature. But the good thing about the warrant articles is I can only spend that money on the roads. And that's, that's a good thing that that was done.
That's what that was did.
Right. So again, let's commit to a, we'll figure out schedules, but within hopefully a month, we can have a work session in which I can, and then maybe if you have some more detailed questions, we can go over and we can look at that 10-year plan and I can tell you, because I have some issues. I was, I kept delaying this report, because it shouldn't have been out months ago, because I hadn't got a chance to get into it and make more of my institutional knowledge kind of, and so we still have some issues here that need to be worked out. So I would like to make it available to public, if you're okay with that?
I'm fine.
So if anyone wants it, we'll keep a, a hard copy here and then it's a rather large document. It comes in two, two pieces, because some of it is just reference material and those are more for my guys.
I was going to ask about that. This, this, one of the documents appears to be, and I'm going to use a bad term here, kind of a best management practices, this is how it should be done. And this probably will satisfy people who have probably some shorthand approaches to how to do road maintenance.
Yeah, if someone has a private road, they can come here and get a copy of this and they could use it and apply it to their private roads. It also has the details of the road segments, so some roads, like Beach Pond Road, we have 12 segments on that road. Each one is a different value. So there's a lot of good information there. The bulk of it isn't here with the recommendations and there are a lot of appendices with a lot of details, yeah. But just so it's out there and then we'll, we'll have a hard copy in the office for anyone to look at. And with that, again, is there any other questions we have on, on my stuff?
David, do you, does the town have a alphabetic, I spent quite a bit of time in this and all these little roads that are this long that I've never heard of, is there an alphabetical list of these that, like I could make a database on, so this is Ifield Road or something? Or do I have to look at the map?
No, no, no. I can, I can sort that spreadsheet and, and just put like Allen Road to Zephyr Road, whatever, A to Z, that's what you want.
Why don't you send me what you can, I'll go back to you. Because what I'd like to do is have something, this is sort of what I write in the, or in the paper, that XYZ Road goes off of so-and-so Road, or if you go down the main road, these branch off, because people ask these questions, okay? Thank you.
And we have that, Marie keeps a log of those, so if anyone has a question like that, you can answer it.
Okay, well, I'll get back to her on the internet then.
Yeah. Okay, great. All set?
Yep. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Community block grant, Vala? Somebody here for that?
This, this item is a requirement for the paperwork associated with the Community Development Block Grant. I did go back through some of the previous grant applications. I was not able to find where we had adopted this code of ethics in those previous grant applications. All we're asking is that you give me permission to go ahead and, and sign this under your authority as a board.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to have the acting town manager sign the Code of Ethics Town of Wolfborough and by asking him to do that, we accept this code.
Second.
Heals in favor?
Aye.
What do you oppose?
Thank you.
Proclamation Municipal Clerks Week, May 5th through the 11th, 2019.
This was provided to me by the town clerk requesting that you adopt the proclamation of Town Clerk Week.
Somebody want to make a motion to that effect? I will. Second.
I will.
Heals in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mileage reimbursement?
So in compliance with IRS rule, the New Hampshire Department of Labor has increased the rate for reimbursement to 58 cents per mile. Just looking for your approval to amend our current policy to reflect 58 cents per mile.
Moved.
Second.
Heals in favor?
Aye.
Any other business?
I have a couple.
The first thing I have, and you will see it in this room, performance, Emma, play will be going on here tomorrow at 10:30 on May 3rd at 6:00 PM and on May 4th, 1:00 and at 6:00 PM. These are great shows. I'm going to be here at 10:30 tomorrow morning to see it. The next thing is a reminder that the Education Funding Forum, which is being supported and hosted by Edie Demarest and Paul Mc, John McDonald, will be taking place on this coming Wednesday, the 8th at 7:00 PM here in the Great Hall. And then my last public announcement, the Water Summit will take place on May 11th from 9:00 to 12:00 and the topic will be Sinobacteria. That's all I have.
Hey, committee reports.
Paul? I was going to talk about the Water Summit. I will not be at the Water Summit, I encourage everybody to go. My son's graduating from university, so I figured I should go and do that with him. So Jim will update, I think, the, the public on some of the responses we've received publicly. Because of my background in, in the industry, I've had a couple of conversations with people about telecommunications services in our town and there's nothing really to report yet, more to follow. But the conversations go on.
That was good, they just cut me off. I attended the member mingle last week. That was, that was absolutely a wonderful, wonderful time and I had an opportunity to meet somebody from Atlantic Broadband. We had a meeting with Atlantic Broadband today, particularly on the business services side, which was important to talk with them about and, you know, the public will hear more about that. I've been to the police commission meeting. That's always, that's always good to learn about what's going on on that side of the world. Spent some time with our treasurer. Linda graciously offered and I accepted beyond the CIP committee. One of the things I asked our treasurer is to start thinking about, what is the debt service capacity our town, you know, should start to take on or could take on? More of a conversation about things, so, you know, that kind of, that was good. I'll, I'll defer this to Linda, because she's now the Selectman's rep, but we did have an Energy Committee meeting last week, which I thought was actually pretty good.
I thought it was real good.
I thought it was pretty good. You're encouraged, all of you, to join this. There is, there's a lot of grant money out there and we should be looking at that kind of stuff. One of the Energy Committee members invited myself and, and Jim, we, we met with somebody from Congressman Pappas', is that his name, Pappas', his office. They're interested in helping us and Linda was there and Barry was there. They're all interested in having a, try to help us get some, get some grants around battery storage and all that kind of techie fun stuff. And it was actually extremely fun to watch everybody sitting in the room advocating for getting our energy costs under control and not that they're out of control, but just kind of getting our arms around our energy, our energy future. I thought that was actually pretty cool. So that's, that's about all I've been doing for the past few weeks.
Well, I was fortunate not to have to go to any meetings. Listen.
David? I went to the member mingle. I've been involved with the New Hampshire Historical Society and some interface with Wolfborough History and they're doing some Granite State News things.
I went to an EDC meeting and they talked about and reviewed the advertising budget for 2019. They're going to spend $4,000 promoting tourism and $1,000 for relocating your business in Wolfborough. I attended two, three Sinobacterias assessing subcommitting meetings. We went and saw the Wetworth Watershed Association. We went and visited Saragin's Pond and we were supposed to go to Lake Centipede, but the scientists who were working on Sinobacteria couldn't make it, so we weren't able to go. As Paul said, I was at the Energy Committee meeting and there's a lot of great energy with that committee and ready to really get their teeth into making some changes. I was with Paul for Congressman Pappas' and I also was at the man, the chamber member mingle. That's all I have.
Okay, town managers report.
As you can probably tell by this evening's meeting, it's been a busy couple of weeks. We did send those, the letters out regarding broadband and 5G. We've received two responses, one from Atlantic Broadband, one from Consolidated Communications stating that they would like to meet with us. So at this point, I am trying to strategize that as well as play some consideration for whom the next town manager may be. But that was positive. As well, as Paul had mentioned, we met with some business reps from Atlantic Broadband today, specific to business services. We informed them that we would really like to see them get out more and talk to our businesses in town as to what they do have for services to offer and they, they were agreeable to that. And one of the things that I think we need to look at from a community standpoint is we do not have good connectivity at Popwell and Abenaki. Those are recreational areas that could potentially need that access for television, whatnot. So that's something that I'm going to work with Christine on to try and get them out there to see if, if they can provide us a better service. Dave Ford had spoken this evening and you heard him use the term quite a bit about having some workshops, him, myself and Matt met today, and that, that was a topic that came up. Some department heads feel that it would probably be more productive to have some meetings with the Board of Selectmen and a workshop forum, that's the only topic for the evening, with the Board of Selectmen and a workshop forum, or that's the only topic for the evening, to try and really get down into the drill into the issue and move forward in those, in those topics. Just food for thought.
I think that'd be great.
He had mentioned the meeting with May 22nd regarding the RAB site at 10:00 AM. I feel that that's important, that we have some select board representation there. I'll be there as well. And lastly, Amy wanted me, Amy Capone-Muccio, wanted me to inform everybody that the Great Hall, we will be doing a senior yoga, yoga program up here in this area. I'm not sure of the schedule, and she didn't put it down, but that's going to be a fun little event for our citizens that will be taking place here, and that pretty much buttons up what I have for you at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions from the press? Public input? Yes, up in the back. No, somebody else had her hand up before you got up.
I'm here first.
Excuse me?
My name is Jo. I got to the area first. I didn't, where's the, where's the rule that you put your hand up? Nobody told me I had.
Okay, okay, go. You've got three minutes.
I have more than three minutes, because, excuse me, this is under my First Amendment right. I tried to write to you to resolve this, but you never answered my, my, my letters. So, under my right to know law, under the right to know law and my First Amendment, I only have a page and, and two, and.
Okay. We've already used up 30 seconds, so.
No, I'm answering you. That has nothing to do with, with my.
Go ahead.
Anyways, there's no timeframe here. There's no timeframe.
Yes, sir.
You was hired to provide safety to this town, and my question is, how are you providing safety for me? Now, remember, as I said before, I have just as much respect for police, for police chief, for our police chief, Rondo, as you do, but he is a threat to the safety of the, of the town, and he is going to be terminated. Now, as you know, and he, he's here, he can get up and defend himself. As you know, I have just been accused for the second time by Police Chief Dean Rondo of a crime he knew I never committed, and I want him terminated, as his continuous criminal actions are a threat to the safety of the community. In his continuous conduct, he has the intent of harming me, and like all criminals, he will never stop. That is, this is the second time he has tried to take away my civil rights by accusing me of a crime he knew I never committed, with the sole intent of harming me, and only his termination will protect me and the public from his malicious acts. Like all criminals, the man is sick. Given my age, his actions towards me are felonies, and I want him terminated and prosecuted. There is no statute of limitations to prosecute him as long as he is still employed. Under my right to know and under the First Amendment right to redress these grievances, I need to know from this town what procedure the town follows when you investigate a complaint of an employee that is made by the public. I want to be present at one point and give my version events in their presence. I am also asking that Robert Maloney, an employee of the dump, be terminated for his part in the conspiracy with Rondo to accuse me of an assault when he falsely stated I pushed him down the two steps in the office at the dump. He did this in retaliation, because I told Mr. Champagne, the supervisor of the dump, that he was rude to me, and together, they all got together and accused me of an assault I never committed. I proved I never committed the assault, and the complaint was dismissed. As a party to this conspiracy, Police Chief Dean Rondo allowed the Belknap County Sheriff's Office to do an investigation in the matter with his direction all along, where he told the Belknap Sheriff's Department, the Wolfboro prosecutor, Morgan, would do the prosecution. All along, Rondo was directing the Belknap Sheriff on how to proceed in the investigation. It was this conspiracy of Police Chief Rondo and Robert Maloney to accuse me of a crime they both knew I never committed, stating falsely that I assaulted Maloney and pushed him down two steps in the office at the dump, when the truth is, I never touched him. And eventually, I proved it, and the case was dismissed, where I was being prosecuted for a simple assault, that the Belknap, Belknap County Sheriff had the evidence all along. They all had the evidence that I was innocent of simple assault. And Rondo saw the evidence that I was innocent, because he was, he was following everything all along, and he saw all the discovery, but he continued to proceed with my prosecution, a malicious prosecution where there was no probable cause. I want to know what new town officials are obligated to do with these very serious complaints, and let me know that because I am an elderly person, and, and the crime of this malicious prosecution to injure me, twice to injure me, is a felony because of my age. Now, I wrote to you and ask you, ask you, what you going to do about this? You know, what is the procedure when somebody accuses your employees, and they are a threat to the safety of the town? What are you going to do?
I think the first thing is, you're addressing the wrong group.
Okay.
We have no control over what happens in the police department, because we have a police commission.
Okay, I'm glad you said that. Wait a minute.
They're the ones that take care of.
No, wait, no, I have to deal with.
No, amen.
Isn't it not true, under the, under the union, under your union, what do you call it, contract, that you maintained equal position with the, with the commissioners and with you people to, to, to all these, whatever the police commissioners do, you have equal, equal position?
No, we do not.
You do not?
We do not.
All right, so.
The only thing we do.
Yeah?
For the police commission, is we fund their, their police department. We have no control over it, other than submitting, they submit vouchers for money, we supply them with the funds. That's all we do. We have nothing to do with any of their police department, with their hiring.
All right, is the new.
With their firing or anything else.
All right, is the new contract the same as the old one? Because I didn't see the brand-new one. Does it say the same thing, the first paragraph, does it say the same thing, that the town maintains equal jurisdiction over the employees of the town as the police commissioners?
No. We have no.
Are you saying it's not the same?
We have no control over their department.
Wait a minute, is it the same as last year?
No.
Oh, it's not?
I believe it is not.
What, what do you believe?
We have no control over that much of it.
Is it, isn't it? Ask them, is it the same as last year's?
I don't believe so. It's a whole new contract. It's a four-year contract.
All right, ask them, please. "I don't believe so" is not an answer. Yes or no? Ask them, somebody knows what the contract says. Ask them if you maintained equal jurisdiction.
No. We do not.
All right, the answer is no.
The answer is no.
Well, I'm going to get their contract, and I'm going to look at it, and then.
You go, go to the police commission and ask them for that.
I don't go to the police commissioners.
Well, that's the only place you're going to get their contract.
They're the police. They're not going to do anything for me.
Thank you.
Now, okay, now, wait a minute. Are you saying the police commission, what about Maloney? What about Maloney? He's not the police. What are you going to do with Robert Maloney?
We've, I think that issue has already been taken care of, as far as I know.
Well, how can you take care of it without me present to tell you my story? How can you do that? I mean, did you terminate him?
No.
All right, then.
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm not going to, I am not going to comment on the employment issue.
Thank you. I would expect you wouldn't. He's not going to comment on it, neither am I, so.
Okay, look, if you do this investigation, which you have to, I have to be a part of it. What are you laughing at? Do you know what I'm going through? You're freaks, you're all freaks.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else who wishes to speak to us?
Hi. My name's Nancy Hirschberg. I live here in town. I was the original chair of the Energy Committee back in 2007, and I'm here to speak about the net metering policy. We are in the midst of the biggest energy transition since the Industrial Revolution, and it's very, very exciting. It poses huge opportunities for communities everywhere, but especially for Wolfboro. The cost of, as an example, the cost of renewable energy has plummeted. Over the past year, as an example, offshore wind saw 24% decline in the levelized cost, about half the price that it was five years ago, and onshore wind fell by 10%, and solar PV by 18% just in the past year. Just in the past month, in April, for the first time ever in the U.S., the renewable energy sector is projected to generate more electricity than coal across the country. There was a big announcement also just a few weeks ago, that there has been a huge breakthrough in battery technology. I know you'll be happy about that, years ahead of schedule. So, it's a super exciting time in energy, and in particular, electric markets. Trends show clearly a future with increased electrification. Our cars and even our homes are going to be heated more with electricity, which is why the MED and our electricity is going to play an even more important role in our energy future. So, recognizing this exciting transition and the opportunity it poses, the Energy Chapter of the Master Plan, which was headed by Paul O'Brien, set aggressive energy efficiency and renewable goals for the town. I'm remembering back, I think it's 20 years ago, I don't know how many years ago, when there was a task force created to evaluate if we should stay as an MED, and thank goodness they did, because it provides a huge amount of flexibility, more than almost any other community in New Hampshire, so we can innovate faster and farther than other communities if we choose to, the Wolfboro advantage. We need to make sure that Wolfboro is prepared for these massive changes and take advantage of the opportunities that they present, both in terms of our infrastructure and our policies, and I'm thrilled that Barry is committed to working on the net metering policy. I know from many conversations with Barry that he's thinking about this constantly and working to be sure that the MED is prepared for the future. Just some very brief background, the Energy Committee was created with a town-warrant article in March of 2007 with a large majority. The mission of the Energy Committee, as approved by the selectmen in July of 2007, is to identify opportunities for the town of Wolfboro and its residents to save energy and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and to work to assure that cost-effective energy efficiency practices and greenhouse, sorry, gas reduction strategies are implemented town-wide. The committee aims to assist the town in addressing these goals, as approved by the voters in the town meeting warrant article in March of 2007. The committee will make recommendations to and cooperate and communicate with town officials. And as I think the department heads who are here would attest, we've worked incredibly well with Dave Ford, and Cindy, and Matt, very constructively for the benefit of the community, and brought in over $150,000 worth of grants and so forth. I should say that Susan Fuller, who's the chair of the committee, is in Washington, D.C., tonight, or she'd be here. The net metering policy, to the point here, is the most important energy decision that will be made in our town since the town's Energy Committee was created, and for many, many years to come. It's important that we provide the Energy Committee an opportunity to evaluate the options brought forward by Mayor Barry, and give input into the decision. That was not in the timeline that was presented tonight. I'm here tonight to express my support and delight for the development of the net metering policy, and to ask, what is the process and plan for the Energy Committee's evaluation, deliberation, and input? Tonight, we heard Dave Ford talking about the dock committee. He would not bring to this board recommendations on the dock without speaking, working with the dock committee. Matt wouldn't bring pathways, recommendations without speaking with the pathway committees. The Energy Committee is, this is what they're there for, and so I, I don't know if there's a plan, or, or if there's, but that's why I'm here, to find out. Thank you.
Thank you.
My guess is, it should go to the Energy Committee to, if there, he's going to give three options to look at the draft.
I agree.
That's what's going to happen, I, you know.
It should be on the critical path.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you always do, as you say, with the subcommittees, they will look at it.
Great.
And then we will do some more talking and see what has to be done.
I agree.
But I, you, you were with me, both Paul and I expected to go there first.
Great.
I, I'd like to, and I'm going to accept that it's a, it's just, it's a part of the critical path, I'm assuming it will be. And I'd just like to say, if I could, something about this person. This is a, this is a tireless person. This person went out and got grants. This person has, has made it her business, along with the Energy Committee, to get in front of Dave Ford and others, to do everything possible to get our energy spend looked at, thought about, worried about, and fixed. We need more use, and, and I think that what, you know, what Barry's trying to do, and by the way, the Dartmouth, for the people in the public, there were some folks from Dartmouth, the Thayer School, who came and helped Barry with, with the net metering discussion. It wouldn't have been done had it not been for Nancy. And I'm not saying that, that against Barry. Nancy was the person who found this. We need to get this Energy Committee into the process, and if they're not in the process, then it's a bad process. That's the way I look at it, because you have a lot to offer. You've, you've been there, and you've done it. So, I'm very supportive of the fact that you need to be on the critical path. That's why I was asking Barry, by the way, earlier, I thought we were going to have this done in first quarter, and now it's June, you know, so we, we, we got to get this thing buttoned up, because I do think it's important.
Oh, it's huge.
And as Linda and I talk about other things, we're going to have to thrash at what the right, what the right policy needs to be, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to not accept the, the building system doesn't work right, therefore, we can't do it. We're not going to have to, we can't accept those, those sidesteps to it. We have to really kind of think about what we're going to do.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Suzanne Ryan, taxpayer.
Keep the mic up.
Tip it up.
Oh, you broke it, you can't talk.
Thank you. Suzanne Ryan, taxpayer. In approximately November, I stopped by at one of your meetings, and I asked you, did you know what would be happening with the granite that was over by Zimmerman's? Yes, I remember. Okay, thank you. And I think I saw enthusiasm with the board, yes, that maybe if we could keep it for a town asset, that we could use it at parks and beautification projects. And I came by today, and I saw it all gone, and I'm glad to see David's still here. Can we find out what happened to it?
Snake took it, right?
If he knows.
Nancy, thank you.
I thought it was part of the contract.
So, all the granite that was taken out, some of it's really old and oversized, and could not be reused, so the intent was to reuse as much as possible. A lot of it was not reused, and so we had put a lot of new stuff in, and keep certain sections all new. There are a lot of pieces. We have now taken possession of that. It's in our stockyard, and it is specifically for what you said, for areas where we can do beautification projects, for BMPs, for potential historic areas like the cemetery. So, it's there as a public use. DOT has also requested a few pieces, so we, we did split, so they have some for their specific projects, but it's very heavy and bulky, so it's not as a, a simple building product. We do have it stockpiled, and intended, just what you said, Paul.
Awesome.
I can't tell you how happy that makes me feel, because when I came by this afternoon, I went, oh, no, we've lost our granite.
That's awesome.
And the contract did say that it was ours to be, what couldn't be used for the project specifically, it was to be ours and stockpiled, so I went, oh, don't tell me the contract is, you got it, so, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Because we're going to go into non-public. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that we go into non-public.
Second?
Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. [inaudible][1726.66]
And the contract did say that it was ours to be, what couldn't be used for the project specifically, it was to be ours and stockpiled, so I went, oh, don't tell me the contract is, you got it, so, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne.
Anybody else wish to speak? Because we're going to go into non-public. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that we go into non-public.
Second.
Yells in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
[inaudible].
Thank you.